It is. One minute after 5:00 PM on March 4th, and I will call the Planning Commission meeting to order. Let's start with a roll call. Just let me know when you hear your name. Shannon Greina.
Hi.
John Krasik.
Here.
Larry Bradbury.
Here.
Bob Soltes.
Here.
Tom Brown.
Here.
Amanda Bennett.
Here.
And I'm Greg Huxema. So that is the roll call for the Planning Commission, and why don't we go around? And if you are on the video, if you could please. I'll call your name, and then you can unmute, and you can let me know who you are. Carl DeCemus is also here from the City Planning Staff. Is Katrina here?
She's not going to be able to join us tonight.
Okay. All right, so I will. I've got more faces than I have room on one screen. So. Commissioner Henderson.
I'm Roger Henderson with the Parks Commission, one of the newbies.
Great. Welcome, Roger. Amy Hillen.
I'm Amy Hillen. I'm with Planning Staff.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. And Kim Mahoney is also here with the Planning Staff. Hi, Kim.
Great. Hi, Chair.
Marlene Druker.
Hi, I am actually currently on your Design Review Board, but I'm formerly on your Parks Commission.
Okay, great. Thanks for joining us. John Ashlock.
Design Review Board.
Hello, John. Nels Peterson.
Hello, Nels Peterson, Design Review Board.
And Commissioner Coronado, who I don't have a face.
Ben Coronado, Parks Commission Chair.
Okay, great. If you don't mind, I actually prefer to be able to see people's faces, so if you could join us with video, that would be awesome. So, and I guess, is there anybody out there whose name I didn't call that's attending today? Oh, of course. Sorry, Michelle. Michelle Thomas, the most important person. And then Cindy Andrews. Hi, I see you there now waving your hand as well. Thanks. Yeah, you were on you were on page two, and somehow I missed you.
Staff.
So. We have some business we just need to attend to quickly before we get to the joint presentation, and there's just one item. And that is approval of the minutes of our February 18th meeting of the Planning Commission. If any of the commissioners have any comments or corrections, please let me know. If not, I will entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so moved by John Krasik, seconded by Amanda Bennett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are accepted unanimously with a unanimous vote. Okay, so welcome to our guests, and. Our guest attendees, that is, and especially welcome to Ann Fritzl. And thank you so much for being here. It was special request for the Planning Commission to have you come and present to us this evening. At the suggestion of Carl and Katrina. So we appreciate you taking the time to do that for us. This is kind of an open forum. I don't know what your preference is, Ann, if you would like to go through your slides and then save the questions to the end? Or have people interrupt along the way?
Well, thank you. Let me first say thank you for having me. I'm delighted to come to come to Gig Harbor tonight. I am the statewide coordinator, short course on local planning, and I've been in this position for about five years, meaning. We normally coordinate about 20 short courses around the state each year. And going to various corners of the state with volunteer planners and very attorneys. And so I'm delighted to just to drop in for a personal short course. I'm just going to provide a framework of how we do planning in our state, just a snippet of the regular short course on local planning. And I would love a more open format. I can't actually see the chat when I'm presenting, but if Carl or somebody wants to watch that and interrupt if there's relevant questions at the time, and we can collect the other ones until the end. I have about 30 slides and as much time as you need to answer questions. So I'm happy to go through them and stop me if you have questions.
Just a quick question for you. I know that when I intended this short course, as folks went. People were attending to ask questions on slides that were going to address their question moments later. So again, I'm perfectly willing to do it either way. But what do you think about just flowing through there and then maybe have people jot down their questions, and if their question isn't answered to you? Having them save it for the end. But again, I'm good either.
Sure, that works. And you can also collect them in the chat. I find that's been really great. Let me do the short courses on Zoom. And so they formulate your question and put it in there and don't have to hang on to it.
Is everybody comfortable with that approach?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then if you all could just mute your microphones, so that cuts down on feedback and background noise. And then we'll let Ann take it and jot your questions down, or as she indicated, push your little chat button and type them out.
Okay. I will start sharing my screen. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great. Not see what I thought I'd be seeing. So let's start. As I said, I am the coordinator for the short course on local planning. I'm also the planner that has I've been assigned to work with Pierce County jurisdictions, and I've been doing that for. At least 15 years. So it's been really fun to see. As the policy works through, seeing communities realize their visions. And it's also really fun to teach this class, just to provide an overview of how the planning framework is supposed to work. So thank you again for having me, and let's get started. So first of all, just a note about the Department of Commerce. Our mission is to strengthen communities, and we have a variety of programs to help communities thrive. From addressing housing and infrastructure, businesses, energy, planning, community facilities, crime victims, and community services. And let me tell you, in this time of COVID relief, we have. An amazing amount of money flowing through our agency and supportive programs. So here's the outline for the short course on local planning. And so it's got usually the three-hour class. It starts with an attorney talking about the legal basis of planning. So. The Planning Enabling Act, which was one of the early acts which authorized planning commissions and authorized planning. And generally, it required a land use and circulation element as well, but that was kind of the basic first planning authorization. Then in the 70s, the Shorelines Management Act came along and designated shorelines of statewide significance, and you had to plan for. Specific environments to protect shorelines at their best uses within your communities. The State Environmental Policy Act was also adopted in the 70s to. Provide information on environmental information to help make better decisions. And then it's also coordinated with a variety of federal laws, such as the Endangered Species Act and. Flood insurance and other things that affect local governments. In the short course, then we talk about constitutional issues such as takings and moratoria and other land use basics. And then we have the open government laws. Now, the Appearance of Fairness Doctrine is when you have quasi judicial decisions, like you're acting as a judge. Deciding whether a project should go forward. If you are, then I suggest you find out more about that. The Open Public Meetings Act, we're not going to go into it in detail. If you are an appointed or elected official, public official, you are required to take that training, and it's usually about 25 minutes. We have a great video on our website. And it basically, a public meeting is when you're discussing business, and if you're doing. Multi-group email, that's a public meeting. If you're having a discussion in the parking lot after your meeting, that's a public meeting. Basically, any discussion needs to take place in an actual public notice, public meeting. So that's important to go get. The only difference from the video on our website is that the fines have increased. It was $100. Now it's $500 for the first offense and $1,000 for each subsequent knowing violation, and those are on the individual. So if you need that training, I suggest you go get it. We have tools on our website. The Public Strengthened Act, just quickly, every writing of government business is a public record, and it can be requested. Now, what we say is if you don't want to see it on the front page of a paper, don't put it in an email. Because the records that you write for business of the city are public records. So that's why you don't have an attorney. They have a lot of scary things to say. But very important to know. So the pieces in blue are the pieces that we're going to talk about today, the Growth Management Act, which is the framework that lays on all of this to guide. How we do planning in the state. And we're talking a little bit about roles in the process. If you were to take a regular short course, we talk about more about legislative and quasi judicial decisions. Public, the importance of public participation as a cornerstone in the Growth Management Act to make good decisions in the public interest. And tips on how to have effective meetings. How to be an effective group, and essential rules of parliamentary procedure. So with that. Here's a link. Here's a link to our website. If you want to hear this again or hear the full short course, we have a 10-video series on YouTube. Where you can download the short course video guide. It's eight pages front and back with. A lot of information and a certificate so that you can say that you took the course. We have a much more detailed guidebook, which provides a lot more background that you can download and read. And then there's a number of places where you can get great planning information in the state. MRSC, the Municipal Research and Services Center, is a fabulous resource. How many of you know about that? I don't see a lot of hands. Oh, good. It is unique to Washington. And it is a place where you can go and they have, you can look up anything you want. If you're looking for accessory dwelling units, they'll have example ordinances and what the state rules are, or if you're looking for. What's a great example of park plans? They'll have, you can go there. The next two are the Planning Association of Washington and the Washington Chapter of American Planning Association. Those are professional associations that have conferences each year. And various trainings, and if you want to learn more about planning, if you're loving it, you can join their organizations. And finally, the last one, Department of Commerce does these regional planners forums, and this year they're all on Zoom, so anyone can attend, and if you go there, you'll find out what the topics are, and we do them monthly. So let's get started on the Growth Management Act, and I'm going to talk about why we plan, the framework. And about implementing and updating your growth management plan. First of all, why do we plan? Well, if you've ever created a project or taken a trip, you plan because when you plan, things just go better. And the same is for communities. So a purpose of a plan is to identify what's great about your community, what's really good here. What you need to protect, and what your needs are. What are your needs right now, and what are your needs going to be in 20 years? And then you identify strategies to meet those, prioritize them, and along the way, you build your sense of community. Planning is also good from a practical matter. It helps to manage public expectations. So if you have a piece of property that you'd like to develop, it lets you know what the rules are. If your neighbor has a piece of property, it lets you know if you have an opportunity to participate in the process and how that goes. The other reason to plan is that we are growing as a state. And as you can see on this chart, that. Washingtonians are increasing gradually, but migration is huge, and we saw that last year with the bubble as 100,000 people came to Seattle over the year. And so people are coming here because of our mild climate. They're coming here because of our amazing economy, the natural beauty, and it is more affordable than places like California. So this is 2019 data on where people are coming from. The majority were coming from Arizona and California. And so we were worried about this in 1990. We worried that we were growing and that we were not able to manage the threats to our quality of life, and so we adopted a Growth Management Act as a framework. To address uncoordinated development and urban sprawl and manage threats to the quality of life in Washington. And so it was to be, in Oregon, it's very top-down. This thou shalt do this, and the state certifies your plan. Here, it's requiring local planning. Here's the framework. Here's how we want you to do planning, the things you want you to consider. Here's the state law for the framework, and it was regionally enforced through regional transportation plans. It's codified in state law at RCW 3670A. If you want some really heavy reading, you can go check that out. And then the advisory recommendations, which means they're not quite the same laws as for ecology recommendations, but they're in 365196, and so it's a lot more detail in how to implement the Growth Management Act. So there are 14 goals in the Growth Management Act. They are apparently not prioritized, but if you look closely, you'll notice the language is different, like some is very. Soft, encourage affordable housing and economic development, and some is much more specific, protect property rights. Maintain natural resource industries and protect the environment. The 13th bullet, encourage historic preservation, isn't really implemented in state law. But it's something we recognize is important to preserve our heritage. And the last one, managed shoreline development, was added as we tried to integrate. Planning under the Shoreline Management Act and planning under the GMA so that they were more connected. And I should say, the GMA has been amended almost every year since its inception. And but so we keep shifting how we do this. We are, we say we practice planning, right? So first, when the GMA was adopted, all of the counties had to designate and conserve natural resource lands of long-term commercial significance. So this means agricultural, forest, and mineral resource lands. For the first two, it's really. Based on soil type, parcel size, proximity to markets, and it was intended to be a very long-term designation. For a long look, and it was to protect our economy. And the other one, mineral resource lands, is only certain places based on the resource that was there and to designate. Also based on economies. So once that was done, the next thing was that all jurisdictions, the counties and the cities, had to designate and protect environmentally sensitive areas. And use the best available science, though that was added later. To inform the regulations that must protect the functions and the values of critical areas. So there's five. The frequently flooded areas and geologically hazardous areas are, hold potential risk to human health and property. And so we want to identify where those risks are and plan away from them so that we're not introducing. Investments into floodplains or areas that are going to slide. Next one, critical aquifer recharge areas is our water that we use for a drinking source. So if you have land within your jurisdiction that feeds your aquifer used for a drinking source, you need to protect it. And you protect it by, one, not paving it over so that the water can infiltrate the ground and fill the aquifer. And the second, not having hazardous uses. So restricting uses. And so that's the aquifer, the porous land itself, and also things like wellheads, which are direct lines down to the aquifer. So you want to be careful of your uses around the wellheads. The last two, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas and wetlands are often irreplaceable natural biological functions. That. Filter water, provide habitat for designated species, which could be. Federal, state, or even local species of importance, and identifying where those species. Make their living and protecting that habitat. So. The next part of the GMA really focuses in on those areas of the state that have much higher populations and much faster rates of growth. And they had to do a lot more planning. So if you'll see that 18 counties in green had either reached a population threshold or had a high level of growth when the GMA was adopted. And were required to plan under the GMA. Those in blue opted in at the time because there was money available for planning. They saw the framework as valuable. Those in gray have low population. Low levels of population and low growth rates. And so they're planning under. Other acts such as the Planning Enabling Act, which means they have a land use plan and a transportation plan, but they're not required to do the other. Pieces that I'll talk about shortly. And this map was adopted in 1990 when the GMA was adopted, and there's been only one change through the last 30 years, and that is Ferry County opted out. And through a special legislation that enabled them to do that, but otherwise, it's been standard. So here's our, here's our big framework. And so the graphic on the left shows the US Constitution, federal laws, kind of the federal level. And next, you'll see the state constitution and revenue authority and other state laws, and the GMA kind of sits on top. As a new level of a framework. And to the right, it kind of is, it's called, one of the hearing board cases called it a cascading hierarchy of goals. So you have the GMA, which provides this overarching set of goals, and we've already seen those. And then there's multi-county planning policies, and that's when you're just in the Puget Sound region. There's a, it's required that there be multi-county planning policies, and those are in Vision 2050, if you're familiar with that. Which I recommend you read. And the next is countywide planning policies, and those for you would be the Pierce County countywide planning policies, and those are being updated. Right now, because Vision 2050 just got adopted last fall. And under that is the comprehensive plan and regulations. So all of those should be consistent. So here's Vision 2050. If you haven't read it, it's really not as scary as it appears. There are a number of policy selections here. And they have a vision for the region and policies. For example, here's one for homeownership. So promote homeownership opportunities for these various individuals who are recognizing historic inequities. So Carl and I talked about this just as we were gathering. This is one of the state laws that may pass. But because it's adopted in 2050, it's one of the themes that should be considered as countywide planning policies and comprehensive plans are developed. So I suggest you have a look at these policies and the local actions in Vision 2050 to kind of give you a big picture of the policy themes for the region.
I think Carl has a question.
Yeah, no, just really quick, Ann. Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to note that. We disabled the chat function in ours in Zoom webinar, so if anybody is searching around trying to find it, figure out where they're going to type that question in. It doesn't exist in Zoom webinar. We did that for. For purposes of public hearings, might be something that we need to think about adding back in for purposes of presentation. So unfortunately, we don't have it here tonight. And so Chair, if I think if we're still on the same. We're going to go forward the same way, then I guess everybody can just write down their questions and then present them at the end. So sorry to interrupt.
No worries. Old-fashioned pencil and paper. Okay, moving along. The next thing under the multi-county planning policies is the countywide planning policy. So every state that's fully planning, or every county. That's fully planning in the state has to develop and adopt countywide planning policies for things that are of a regional nature. So how do you take this countywide population growth? Population projection and disaggregate at the local level, and I'll go into that in a minute. How do you designate urban growth areas or plan for statewide facility or countywide facilities of statewide importance, such as highways or airports, things that are difficult to cite? That you may need in your county, but need to figure out a regional way to agree where they should go. Affordable housing needs and housing in general is a regional issue. So how are you going to plan for housing regionally? And economic development is also required. So Pierce County planning policies, that you can just Google those, and there's a lot of various topics. And so, for example, I picked out a housing policy to follow that one that we looked at for the multi-county planning policies, and they. Were not exactly the same. This one focuses on considering availability and proximity of public transportation and services to support affordable housing. So they don't actually always follow directly, but the general theme should be there. So another thing for you to consider and also know that these are being updated this year. So the State Office of Financial Management issues population projections every five years. When it was in 2017, and the next one's in 2022. And you can go to the website and you can pull up the population projections. And so they say for each county, there's a medium, there's a range of housing, I mean, a range of population, so low, medium, and high. And you can choose within those which projection you're going to choose at the countywide level, and it's a 40-year projection. And you use that to. Figure out where population is going to go within the county. And whether you need to increase the size of your urban growth area. So here's an example from Benton City. They get the population projection, and the cities and the county, they say, well, who has space, who has wastewater capacity and. Water availability and UGA that's not yet filled and allocate population based on their housing needs. To the various urban growth areas, and a certain portion is expected to go in rural areas. I mean, the GMA. Pushes population into urban areas because that is the most cost-efficient way to provide urban services. So sprawl is very expensive. The GMA, one of their goals is that we encourage concentration of urban growths within urban areas. So if this county finds that at countywide level, they don't have enough land within city limits or established urban growth areas to absorb all that population. They can also expand the urban growth area. Now, in Pierce County, there's a, the urban growth area is at a countywide level. And there's also a combined urban growth area that's. South of Tacoma, and it was very large when it was first adopted. So Pierce County is very, holding a very close line on expanding the urban growth boundary. They are looking at pulling in in some places. And pushing out in others when cities need to make adjustments. So in the rural areas, we're expecting low-density development, so like five or 10 or one unit per 5, 10, or 20 acres. And a use of agriculture and forestry and not a lot of people because it's expensive to provide sheriff service and. Emergency and other services out in rural areas. And if you're in a buildable land county, which you are, there are seven counties, those in the Puget Sound region plus. Clark and Thurston and Watkin County just last year. You have to. Consider reasonable measures before expanding the UGA. So here's the buildable lands. It looks back at to what extent do development match your expectations? And looks forward, is there sufficient capacity for residential employment growth? And if your planning patterns don't match what you thought was going to develop, you need to adopt reasonable measures. To more closely align what you thought was going to happen with what was actually happening with development. So here's a quick look at Gig Harbor's UGA. And some of the countywide planning policies related to. Potential annexation areas. You can see that the city of Gig Harbor is in gray, and then the potential annexation areas are in. Yellow for the most part. That they're not incorporated, but their expectation is that they will be developed at urban densities. And the expectation is they will be annexed into, that urban growth areas are annexed into cities. That that is the general. That that is the general um, general direction. That cities adding unincorporated urban growth areas that they are annexed and that the entire area is fully served with capital facilities. And this is somewhat aspirational because it's very expensive and difficult to expand. But that is the general goal and framework plan for the growth management act. So now we've gotten to the comprehensive plan. If you are a city, there are five elements. The land use element is a general goal of where the uses are supposed to be. They should look at stormwater, ground, uh, groundwater and physical activity. This was added in two thousand and five. Have you planned your community so that people can be physically active? The other elements, transportation, housing, utilities and capital facilities are an inventory of what you have now and what you're going to, what your needs are now and what you're going to need in twenty years with twenty years worth of growth. Because it's a twenty-year plan. And if you're in a county, you're, have to define what rural character is for you and for, and protect that rural, rural character going forward. The plan has to be coordinated and consistent. So we talked about the external consistency with multi-county wide and multi-county planning policies and then internally consistent. Is it based on the same population assumptions? Can, can you afford to serve your entire UGA with public uh, facilities? So as you're adopting your plan, here are the actors that are involved in this. So first, the professional planning staff help manage the public process. They collect changes to the comprehensive plan. They do analysis and research. A lot of finding about how other jurisdictions manage certain issues. They may draft language, proposed language or proposed code. And they're required to send it to the planning commission. Now, the planning commission is advisory. And they um, are there to gather the opinions of the community. And they're writing a recommendation to the city council. Now, the city council may or may not um, exactly align with what the planning commission recommends. They can make their own choices based on, uh, and each of these recommendations should have rationale why we think it should be this way and so that the, the council can adopt. Only they have the authority to adopt comprehensive plans and make budget decisions. There may be a hearings examiner for quasi judicial decisions. That's really a recommended process for um, more expensive development decisions because it takes it off the workload, excuse me, of the planning commission and puts it in the hands of usually a lawyer that can look at the decision criteria for the project and apply those and uh, approve or deny or approve with conditions of project based on their criteria. So when you're adopting the comprehensive plan, it's based on this public outreach early and often that we talked about. There's the review that by the planning, planning commission. You have to do a environmental review on every action in Washington, whether it's a project or a non-project action such as a comp plan. You do have to notify the state sixty days before you adopt, and that's so that we can uh, point out areas that, that may have been missed, point out areas of risk. Um, provide encouragement for certain policies, but we don't certify the plan. We do not, we are not required, we do not have the authority to okay the plan. Your plan is assumed valid upon adoption. There is a requirement that the Regional Transportation Planning Organization certifies the transportation element. And so your RTPO is, is the Puget Sound Regional Council. And they do a little bit more because they have the multi-county planning policies. They, um, the plan can be amended only once per year because it's intended to be a long-range document and not move with short-term market decisions. It must be updated every eight years on a schedule in um, in statute. And that's because population changes. Um, we may have implemented certain policies. There may be changes to state law. There's certainly new projections and new needs, and so they have to be updated every eight years. Once a plan is adopted, it is appealable within sixty days to a growth management hearings board to by anyone who has standing, which means they participated in the adoption process and wrote letters or provided public testimony. And so here's the website for the Growth Management Hearings Board, and that's another great resource. You can go there and they have digests. And so yours is the central um, Growth Management Hearings Board, because there's three. There's eastern, western and central. They're meant to be uh, attuned to local circumstances. And you can look at the decisions from the hearings board on whatever topic you like. So accessory dwelling units, you can go there and, and search under that and find out what decisions they've made um, over the last thirty years. So your plan has been implemented. So a, the comp plan is the policy document. It authorizes the regulations. So the regulations must be consistent with and implement the comprehensive plan. And so that's your city code. There's traditional zoning uh, which sets densities and lot sizes, although many communities are now adopting more form-based codes or hybrids. Uh, especially in areas with station areas to, to allow more people to live there. Critical areas regulations set the rules around the critical areas that we talked about. Subdivisions just sets out a process for how subdivisions are to be uh, developed and ensure that you have adequate provisions for all of these pieces that support our human development. Uh, other regulations such as the public work standards or design standards for your community signs. Um, they regulate health, sa- and safety within the community. And that's actually one of the basic leases of planning from a hundred years ago is regulating health and safety for our communities. We've come a long way from tenement buildings. Um, the next piece I want to focus on is a capital facilities element. So in your capital facilities element, you have to adopt a level of service. And the GMAs, and that we adopted it because the story is that Speaker of the House was driving through traffic up on four oh five and said, "Oh my gosh, we're stuck here in traffic, you know, pre nineteen ninety still, and they're still building." Like somebody ought to be sure that we're providing facilities as we're building more housing. So you have, required to adopt a level of service, which is required only for transportation facilities, but can be adopted for other things. And if a development is going to decrease your level of service, um, the development must be denied, or the developer must provide the improvement, or you can reassess your levels of service. At the plan uh, wide version, once you look at your plan, if your revenues can't play for the needed of facilities to maintain that level of service, you have to really reassess the land use element. Or many jurisdictions reduce the level of service for certain things that they just can't manage. Like in Olympia, there's an intersection that has building on all sides of the street. And there's no way that they can expand that intersection and they're like, well, it's just going to be not a very good level of service for those for our twenty-minute brush hour. So a currency program is, uh, is what's called maintaining a level of service. So here's our map for uh, updates. And you'll see that the Puget Sound region is in twenty twenty-four, and it's a rolling schedule. That's so our staff can assist communities as they do their updates through time. And if you are late or are appealed, then you are not able to get these grant and loan programs. You must be in compliance with the GMA to receive the grant. You can apply when you're outside of compliance, but to receive it, you have to be in compliance. My, my last slide is on good planning. So the short course on local planning has been presented since nineteen seventy-seven in Washington. So before the GMA, and it's basically on the process and the framework for planning. But we never really talked about what is good planning and what our community should be looking like. And so one of the thoughts these days is about the twenty-minute neighborhood, and this is ever more present as we're here in COVID. Like, can, can people get around? Can non-drivers um, get around to what they need? Are housing options available for all economics of, of the community? Are there living wage jobs? And I have these two graphics of this human-centered design. The first in the, the group of slumless, smokeless cities is from a hundred years ago. It's designed for neighborhoods connected by public transportation. And the next, the other map below is, is how we're doing planning now, especially through sound transit. We're planning for villages connected by high-quality transit networks. So in Gig Harbor, you certainly um, have bus, but not, not the train. So how are you creating neighborhood centers that are providing service for um, multi-generational and multi-income people to live together efficiently? And that's all I had. If you want to get the full short course, we have four more coming scheduled this spring. Um, you can sign up on our website. Um, and we have the afternoon and evening ones. So that's all I had today. I'll be happy to take questions.
Okay, um, thank you very much, Anne. That was uh, a terrific concise um, presentation. I, I went to the short course and uh, you put that together nicely with a tremendous amount of information. So well done.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. So I will just um, open the floor if you want. Maybe you can, I'm just, uh, I can't see you all at once. So um, if you have a question, why don't you just unmute yourself and speak up? And if it gets to be uh, too crazy, we'll try something else.
Uh, Anne, um, you and Carl were talking about a book that dealt with the impact, some, something about barriers to people of color and housing. Uh, just before the meeting started. Do you have a name for that book?
Oops. It's The Color of Law. Whoa, it's by Richard Rothstein. And so he has a, a bunch of YouTube videos, and it's, it's just shocking about the federal government and the federal um, bureaucrats really promoting redlining and shutting people of color, African-Americans explicitly out of housing opportunities. And it's, it's stunning.
Okay, uh, and one more question, Anne. Uh, I come from Oregon where I worked in local government. And as, as you probably know, down there, you have Land Conservation and Development Commission, which can basically step into a city's planning process and say, "No, you can't do this," or "You gotta do that." Uh, is there any provisions in Washington State for the state to do the same?
It is, uh, as I explained, uh, we call it a bottoms-up process. And so there was an ex, that's how we like to do things in Washington's. Cities like to have local determination. And so the state generally does. I'm trying to think, there must be some things that step in, but in your comprehensive plan, you are in charge of your policy. They must be consistent with state law. Um, they must be consistent with the other policies, but you have choice, you can make local choices.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, I see that you're unmuted. Did you have a question?
Uh, no, I, I'm still thinking about a question. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
Michelle, you said there was somebody, um, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Carl. Um, looking at the comprehensive plan, it seems to lay, you know, for a city, let's say. It seems to lay out certain goals. And then legislators do certain rules that apply to zoning and public work standards. Um, if the rules that the legislature, the, the city's local government makes contradict the comprehensive plan, is there any way, is there any recourse to say the things that you're doing seem to contradict your overall plan?
Right, thank you. And, and nice to see you again, Marlene. She came to a short course, I don't know, a couple of years ago. Um, so once your plan or a regulation is adopted and the sixty-day uh, appeal period is passed, then it's presumed valid law and can move forward. But inconsistencies are not supposed to be there. It's, your regulations are supposed to be consistent with and implement the policies. So if you have a, a number of inconsistencies that you think should be brought up for discussion about aligning them better, the update opportunity is one where a community should scope what needs to be changed in the plan and the regulations. So it's the plan and the regulations that have to be reviewed and um, what needs to be looked at at that time.
Yes, can I follow that up?
Sure.
Which one is supposed to lead? Is the local zoning or is it back and forth? Is the local, or if you change your local zoning, do you then look at your comp plan and say, "It's not aligned, let's change the comp plan"?
Or? Hey, is the framework. The Vision twenty fifty has a lot of goals and policies that you should be aligned with and the countywide planning policies. And so, and the policies. So all of that is supposed to be aligned. Um, and when you change your regulations, though, that is the law. The policy, the, the regulations are the law. They are what required, how you permit development according to what your regulations say. But you don't go change your policies just because your regulations are different. They still need to look upwards to the other policies and make sure that you're con- consistent.
Couldn't your local zoning be contested because it contradicts your comprehensive plan?
It could be, and probably in an update process is when you, I mean, at any time, you can propose changes to your regulations or your comp plan and they be put into an annual work plan. But the big opportunity that we, that you will have is an update.
So I have a, kind of a related question to follow on. So you said the state doesn't certify the comprehensive plan, but um, and and this touches a little bit on what Marlene just said, but can the state veto your plan if it's just way out of bounds? That, that, I mean, or? Pardon me?
The state can appeal your plan.
Okay.
But anyone who has standing can appeal your plan. Anybody who participated, who wrote comments. So you send your plan into Commerce and we share it with other state agencies. We don't have a system to make it broadly available, but your local constituents, it should be posted on your website. The um, public participation requirements so that everyone can see what the proposed amendments are. Anybody who comments can then appeal once it's adopted.
So the presumption is then, at that, that sixty-day notification period that goes to state is that they would pick up on something that was out of bounds and, and they would advise uh, the city of Gig Harbor to say, "You can't do that."
We wouldn't say you can't do that. We would strongly advise that you take this other action, which is more consistent with the Growth Management Act and policies.
Okay.
But if, um, if it's not, uh, if, if we miss it, I can, I can think of some regulations and policies in other parts of the state. Like, how, how do we not see that? And they're adopted and they're law until an update or another opportunity or someone brings it up to change.
Okay, thanks.
But we have so we can't, I mean, we, we're, we are eight people.
Right. Okay.
Anne, a, a couple of questions. Where would I go to find a, uh, an illustration or a description or discussion of all of the different uh, uh, planning uh, acts or, and things? And, and how, for example, the transportation plan intersects with, with the comp plan, how the shoreline management intersects, et cetera. I mean, is there, is there an explanation of that somewhere that?
There is not a lot of great writing on that. So there's, like Ecology Produces a CIPA Handbook, but we don't have a Growth Management Act handbook. So you would have to look at each item individually.
Okay, second question. Of all the planning commissions in the state, are there some that seem to do an exceptional job in your experience? Do any stand out as, as being really on, on, on top of their, their mandate? What's your opinion about that?
We have some some recommendations for for planning commissions to be, to have best practices. So they are have an annual work plan. So you set that, you work with council to make sure that they know what you're working on. You regularly touch in with council and other committees to make sure that you're aligned as, as you work together. Make sure that you have the right people on the committee that are going to provide a broad variety of opinions. Make sure that your chair is excellent and encourages all voices, is very organized, can handle things like public hearings. We have some guidance in our, the materials I shared, there's a, there's a quick the piece that we have on effective planning commissions in our little video guide is pretty good. It's eight, eight very quick points. Plus the rules of essential parliamentary procedure. And we have pretty good pieces in the, the longer document, the 270 page one. There's a little article called New to the Planning Commission, and it kind of provides some guidance and encouragement on how to do a good job. Being on the planning commission is a really important job for other advisory commissions. Because you're bringing opinions into the city, you're highly valued by staff and council for your opinions and your engagement. And your whole community, because you're taking your time on a Thursday night. Instead of having dinner with your family, you're here in a meeting learning about planning. So valuing your your role and your committee and all the voices on the committee is is one of the most important things that you can do.
In your experience, are there any cities that have particularly effective planning commissions? Are there any standouts?
I would have to think about that.
All right. All right, I'll send you an email and remind you of that question and see if you have any thoughts.
I think that's a question for planners because I only get to see planning commissioners like this. I don't get to see them work. But when you have, can very efficiently manage the conversation and work through issues in a, in a logical way and, and make those, those recommendations based on solid rationale. That's the job of the planning commission. Here's the recommendations from your staff. Here's what, here's their professional advice. Here's the things that you considered. And you have a record of that. And this is why this is the way we think our community should do this. That's a gift to your council because they have your solid record and they can move forward with your recommendations.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. From the Parks Commission, so haven't served any time on the planning commission, but in various city council meetings I've attended, I've sometimes heard, and maybe I'm mistaken, but people say, well, we have to do this because we have to meet our minimum growth goals. Do cities and counties in the state of Washington have minimum growth goals? And in this day and age, why would we have that? I mean, if a city doesn't want to grow, they say we are good where we are. Why force them to grow? Because there's always a cost. It may look great to put in a whole new road. But then we're chopping down the forest, we're using more gas, we're just, I mean, I, I don't get it unless I'm wrong. If I'm wrong, just say, hey, that's, no, that's not what it is.
That is a really hard question, right? People are coming here and they are occupying spaces and other people are getting pushed out and they are living down the road in their RV. Our population is growing. The state projects that population and provides it to the county. And as a county, you have to figure out how to accommodate these people because there's no way we can stop them coming from Washington. And if we're not building enough housing to accommodate them, and we get to choose how to, how to accommodate them as within being able to provide for affordability. The price of housing continues to increase and affordability gets worse. There is very low vacancy rates in Washington right now. And we all have a responsibility to plan for housing. We, our hope is that more dense housing is near those transit networks and that we're providing more condensed neighborhoods as a more efficient, cost efficient way to house those people, but we can't stop them from coming. And we are required to plan at a countywide level to absorb that population.
Okay, and that, that raises a nice segue into another question I had, and that is the, those transportation networks always look pretty on a map. And they sound terrific in theory. But the reality is and this is, I'll use hyperbole to make the point, nobody rides public transportation. And, and the, the link may be an exception to that. But even outside of football games and, and, you know, rush hour. You know, in, in really big population centers like Seattle, I live right across the street. The, the city bus goes by my house every single day, the main line through Gig Harbor. And nobody is ever on that bus. Except for sometimes one, sometimes three, never full. So it, it, it seems odd that we make that such a key point. And spend so much money. And yet it's not utilized or tremendously underutilized.
But don't you wish all those other people on the road with you would just get on the bus?
Well, I do, but the reality is that's not, that's not human behavior in, in the year 2021.
2021 and 2020 have been tough, but yes, it's absolutely true. But there are a lot of reasons why we want to plan for multimodal transportation. So maybe not where you live right now, not a lot of people are riding the bus and this COVID thing has absolutely changed everything. But there are a lot of communities where people do ride the bus, where they find it an easy alternative. And in Seattle with the cars of parking. And there, and the, the lengths of commutes, that makes a lot of sense. In Vancouver to our north, incredible levels of transit ridership. So you can choose not to, but for disabled people, children, people who can't afford a car, having a public transit system is, is very important to the nation. It's a huge public subsidy to ensuring that people can get around. Even if you don't have a bus that runs well, planning neighbor, dense neighborhoods where people can live at certain affordable ability levels in smaller units and have services within them and a neighborhood where you can walk to the coffee shop. If you're working at home because of COVID and you live in a neighborhood, you can get to your community's neighborhood store. It's the human centered design for how we've lived human civilization for thousands of years. And so it's still, we've tried other things, Broadacre City. And that was a disaster. Other kinds of urban sprawl, we know it's really expensive, it uses up land, it creates incredible traffic. This is the time-tested way that humans thrive. That may be personal opinion. But you want all those people that are coming to Washington to be living in those neighborhoods to preserve our statewide quality of life.
Oh, I totally agree. And I'm not denying, you know, the importance or theoretical importance or the, the theoretical benefits of it. But I, I'm an optimistic realist.
Me too.
Not just an optimist. So anyway, I don't need to, don't need to belabor that point.
I drank the Kool-Aid. I really do believe in this, the framework for growth. And I think it's the way that humans can remain healthy, opportunities for physical activity, that it reduces our, our long-term emissions, that it provides independence for all of our population, that it provides more affordable housing. There are so many reasons why that we want to plan our, our human developments carefully.
Other questions from anyone? I have one more if, if nobody else does. Oh, go ahead, Bob.
Is that, is that, am I, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Anne, I had a question for you on requirements flow down. Let's talk about Vision 2050 for a second. I, I read the climate and environmental part of that fairly carefully. And there's a lot of stuff that's in there that's going to have a big impact, I think, on the, the planning in the state and the county and the city. That's a pretty big change, I think. And how's that going to really flow down in, in the real world?
It is true. Vision 2050 is very ambitious. It was adopted by your elected officials. I believe it is probably somewhat aspirational. But your plan gets updated and submitted to the Puget Sound Regional Council. And they get to certify your plan. So if there are certain policies that they see as really important that be included in your plan, they can not certify your plan or conditionally certify it, which means you are not eligible for certain transportation funds or other kinds of funds.
Does that also apply, Anne, to like new law that the state, say the legislature passes a law tomorrow or it becomes law tomorrow? How does that law then flow down through the planning documents? Because I presume that a law is effective whenever the law says it's effective.
It's true. It has an effective date, like usually 90 days after the bill is passed, but you only have to put it in your plan with the next update for the planning pieces. So we recommend that you get it on the books. For example, there's new definitions for shelters that are in this bill. And so when the bill passes, you have until your update deadline to put them into your plan, but you might want to do it sooner just to get those tasks out of the way. Because you don't have policy choices if there's a new state law. It's something you just have to do.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Coronado, I see your hand is raised there.
Yes, thank you. I have like three fairly unrelated questions. I'll fire them out and you can answer if you're able to. Is the Growth Management Act, does the, the tribal, does the tribes, do they have to adhere to this at all? My second question is I know you had mentioned that the Growth Management Act is intended to not be affected by short-term market fluctuations. How is what happened in the last year going to be incorporated into it? That seems like a pretty seismic change in the way that people travel and to and from work. And then my third question is, we have a few parks commissioners here. Can you touch real quick on how the PROS plan is adopted into the comprehensive plan? Thank you.
Questions. Okay, so for the first one, the tribes, are they required to do GMA? No. They're the own thing. They have their own laws. They're they don't have to do anything we say, but there's a lot of good reasons to coordinate with the tribes. And so we encourage, and there's actually new, there's a bill in the legislature to, to encourage a lot more close coordination between the tribes and local governments. The second one, COVID, what's our impact on our planning? And there's been a lot of discussion around that, around planners. The neighborhood unit is still incredibly important. We've all been enjoying the lack of traffic. We are working at home and a lot of people are like, this is fantastic. I don't want to go back to the office. So imagine we're going to see a lot more people working from home. In fact, my Commerce closed half the building. So their expectation is that at least half of us are going to be working from home most of the time. But it's still, so maybe we need fewer freeways. But we still need places for people to live that are high quality, that have places for them to walk and parks for them to recreate. We still need schools for our children. We still need to show that there's adequate water and sewer. Were there, were there other pieces that you were thinking that were a fundamental change?
No, I, I was just curious to see what your input might be or your perspective with essentially what you had mentioned.
And the last piece on the parks. So there is a Parks and Rec element. There's, if you look in the GMA, there's actually, I think about nine elements. It also includes Parks and Rec and economic development, but those are not actually required under the GMA because when they were passed, I think in 2007, maybe, there was no state funding provided for local governments to develop plants. And so that's an option, but it's a good idea. And now if you want to get funding from the Recreation and Conservation Organization Office, RCO, they have a template for a Parks Element. And so you basically need to create a Parks Plan according to their requirements so that you can get funding from that office. Does that answer your question? I'm not sure, P R O S.
Well, it absolutely does. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I would just add that the PROS plan, then, that's, that's one of those plans that when we go to do our comprehensive plan update coming up, we would use that the recently adopted PROS plan to guide us through that update. So pieces of that PROS plan might actually populate the the Parks and Rec element of the comp plan and maybe find, find their, find their policies, might find their way into other elements of the, of the comp plan. So it's a, it'd be used to inform that update.
Great, thanks, Carl.
Great questions.
Okay. Couple, I have a, I have a there might be a question in this first statement, but one of the, one of the frustrations that we've had at the planning commission is the concept of the level of service and the, the, the data shows notwithstanding anyone's feelings, but the data shows that, that the growth in Gig Harbor has tremendously outpaced the predicted pace of growth as far as the 2030 and 2040 projections. And the fact that we're already there would, would verify that. That's why I said the data shows that. And we've had a development come up, for example, at an intersection, a major intersection, a major traffic snarl. And the project was allowed to go on because the level of service didn't change from, I can't remember, was it D or a D minus? It stayed at D or D minus. That, that doesn't feel good. It doesn't feel right. And it doesn't feel like good planning. And it, in my simple Iowa farm brain, farm boy brain, it doesn't even make sense. So I don't know if you want to comment on that and then I'll have my question.
That's a tough, that's a tough one. So there are a lot of communities out on the edge like Bonnie Lake, Black Diamond. I didn't quite know that Gig Harbor was grown to that level, but they are growing way beyond expectations. Because it's assumed to be further out, maybe a little bit more affordable. But if you have adopted a level of service D, you're assuming that there's congestion, most peak hours. And that you are not willing to invest to to add extra roads and that one, one way to measure, maybe you need to change the way you've measured level of service. Maybe you don't use the ADE, maybe you're using diagram, the, what the streets look like. Or so that we're saying that the maximum street is going to be three lanes with some turning pockets. Or we're going to have a multimodal level of service. If you want to had more development here, then you need to complete the bicycle network. Bellacahama is a great model for a multimodal transit level of service. So you have, and this is very common, most jurisdictions use this A to F, which is you know, really, really an old way of thinking that traffic should be fast flowing. And if it's not, it gets a low score and we should fix that or we should just accept that it's going to be low. So a lot of communities are exploring So a lot of communities are exploring multimodal level of service. It might be something to look into and see how that changes the projections. But you, how are you going to stop development? Within an urban area, you're required to develop at urban levels. Um, you can set your level of service very high so that developers have to pay a lot to develop within your community. And the city of Gig Harbor would have to invest as well.
Okay.
Local choices that I, uh, would require a lot more discussion.
Okay, and, and my question, um, is that one of your slides, you know, showed the, the, the three circles, the, the city council, the Planning Commission, and the Planning Staff. And you had arrows going, eh, you know, between the Planning Commission and the city, the Planning Staff. And you have arrows going two directions between the Planning Commission and the City Council. Generally speaking, um, that arrow between the City Council and the Planning Commission and Gig Harbor has a very large arrow pointing towards us. And, and, um, so traditionally, the, the, the council has decided on the priorities and has assigned us work to do and comment on. Um, and so historically, there hasn't been a lot of opportunity for uh, the commission to say, hey, City Council, we think this is an important item. Um, so à la Bob's, or excuse me, um, Tom's point. Are there, there places where that's different and that are doing, and that, and they're doing that well, where there's more of a two-way communication? What is your recommendation about the count, or excuse me, the commission, um, coming up with their own good idea, studying them and passing the information to, to the City Council? Um, or is it pretty standard way of doing business that the City Council decides, decides for us what's important and what we should be working on?
Excellent question.
Well, that is a very politically laden question as well. Um, and so the elected, the council is elected, so they have been elected by the public to set priorities and make decisions for the community. And the hope is that they are interested in listening to every member of the community to identify what the priorities are and what the needs are and what direction the community should be moving in. So one of the ways, I was on the, uh, an advisory committee for the city of Olympia. And one thing we did was we had joint meetings between different committees and then, um, council members from certain committees to discuss what, uh, what their priorities are and what the commission, what, or what the, our advisory committee was working on, and kind of make sure that we were all thinking similar things that the way we're headed in the same direction. So you can build in to, build in more of a check-in um, into your process. Um, you're also all members of the public. If there's policy issues that you want to work on, you can certainly provide uh, public comment and say this is something you'd like to work on. The council does set the docket in general. These are the things that we want to work on this year. I can, um, look into some recommendations from other places that have, uh, different approaches.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like there's a little bit of frustration, but elected officials are elected. They get to make the decisions, hopefully considering your recommendations.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say, I, I don't think frustration is the right word. It's just, it's just, um, uh, exploring uh, new or different opportunity um, with a very talented and active group of people, uh, that are currently on the Planning Commission.
Yeah, and there's certainly new policy things that are coming up all the time that, that may not, that maybe it's your job to identify what those are and push those up.
Okay. Marley, you had a question?
You have a question. Um, for cities that plan on a level of service for motor vehicles, I understand that, you know, a new development and we in Gig Harbor have impact fees for all new developments. And that's supposedly to deal with the transportation impacts and keeping a level of service to a certain degree, but um, it, I, it, I, I wonder if there's any piece of this that looks at long-term maintenance? Because it's one thing to say the development is going to pay for certain improvements that will keep a level of service. But is there, do any cities do this, or does any planning look at, is this development actually going to be bringing any next tax revenue to handle the long-term maintenance liabilities that you're putting on building more roads and spreading out your water system and your services?
No, residential development is not a good investment for cities.
Yeah.
It, it's expensive and it costs a lot, and you're not gonna make it back in property tax revenue.
Yeah.
But the tax, the property taxes are the way that we expect to pay for the long-term maintenance.
So is there any means to say certain developments eh, within your comprehensive plan and your zoning, to say there are certain types of developments that we are not allowing because they are going to create these long-term liabilities? And we will never be able to raise taxes enough to, i- it seems like it's incredibly poor planning, I guess is what I'm getting at, to keep doing things that are going to make long-term maintenance liabilities on your cities.
Um, you, the, one of the cornerstones of the GMA is once your comp plan is in place and with the zoning in place, permitting decisions are predictable. So if you have a development that's consistent with the regulations, you know that you're pretty much asserted that you'll get a per, a permit. So saying no, we're gonna deny certain developments. You're gonna do that with your zoning choices. But there may be choices that you can incentivize or direct development in different ways. So one of the ideas that we're, I haven't really seen anybody use it yet, but have impact fees based on where, that may change based on where the development is. So that makes a lot of sense if you're in a area that's further out, that's gonna cre- create a lot more traffic. Maybe the impact fees there are a lot more expensive, where if it's an infill project where you're putting in, you know, an ADU or a small, uh, duplex eh, in, inside the inner ring of the town, then your impact fees are gonna be a lot smaller to encourage that low imp, more low impact development.
Eh, I mean, it kind of makes sense to me, but I also think that you should have a mechanism for it not just to be the initial impact fees, but it should be your long-term moving forward fees. Um, so that, you know, a fairer way for development to actually pay its costs.
Okay, well, that's, I think that's a good point, and, and, uh, I'm not sure we, we have an answer for that tonight, but, uh, point well taken. Okay, um, any other questions, comments before, uh, we wrap things up this evening? Okay, well, um, Anne, thanks so much for your, uh, concise presentation, your, your comments, your expertise and experience. And, um, that's certainly gonna be helpful, I think, for, for our Planning Commission. Um, we have a number of members that, uh, have joined recently, and because of COVID, um, uh, we have yet to tackle, um, some, some meaty projects, but this is gonna be a very busy year for us. So this is a, a timely presentation, and we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much for having me. And I encourage you to reach out with an email if you have additional follow-up questions. I'm, I'm very passionate about teaching how we do planning in, in the state. And thank you all for your engagement.
Thanks again. Okay, if the, um, the commissioners want to stay on for just a moment, we, the, uh, we just need to move on, on our agenda. Uh, the only thing would be other business, Carl. Um, including next meeting.
Yeah, um, so I, next meeting, uh, we, we plan to have, um, well, we say that at the next council um, meeting, we're expecting them to, we expect council to, um, approve a professional services contract with, uh, Ready Associates, who's our, um, our biological consultant. Um, and so, uh, we're expecting, uh, to bring them back on board so we can finish up the shoreline master program work. Um, so I suppose there's a slight potential. And looking at the calendar, but there's a slight, there's a slight potential that at the, um, at the next Planning Commission meeting, we may be able to bring the SMP back for, um, at least for discussion. And we wouldn't obviously be ready for a hearing, but we may be able to bring it back, um, and sort of re, reintroduce it, re-energize the group. Here's what we're, you know, here's where we're at. Uh, kind of maybe get a discussion going about, uh, what this, um, art in the shoreline, uh, looks like. Um, as a, that's something new that's been sort of tacked on, so we're gonna be looking at that. And, uh, we may be able to, um, just take a real generalized look at it, uh, just to kind of get our feet wet, so to speak. Um, and then maybe talk about, no pun intended, but I guess, maybe I should have intended. Um, uh, and then maybe we, you know, we could maybe discuss the, uh, the shoreline master program, you know, where we've, where we've been. I know we've done that already, uh, but we've got a couple of new members that maybe didn't get that. Um, we could just kind of run through the, at least run through the spreadsheet uh, that we've been using, the direction, the guidance that we've been given by ecology. Uh, and look at what we've gotten done and, you know, and what's left, which isn't very, so, uh, I, I, I'm, I haven't, Katrina and I haven't had a chance to touch base on, you know, whether or not we feel like we're ready to pull that, all that information together and bring it to you, because it is, you know, it is, might be quite a, quite a lift between now and then. Um, and knowing that, you know, we haven't had our consultant on board for a while now, so he also needs to kind of get back up to speed. So, um, but if we are bringing something, that's what it would be. The second agenda item, then I think would probably be a, um, a continuing, uh, discussion, uh, about, uh, Planning Commission, sort of continuing off from where we, you know, from what we talked about previously about, um, Planning Commission, um, potentially studying uh, items outside of the, what the, um, the work program dictates, uh, and down by council. I think we were gonna put that on the agenda as well, so likely be those two items, just kind of off the top of my head.
Okay. Yeah, and that second item, um, uh, should not take a long time.
I know.
Uh, it's just kind of a, a follow-up, but close the loop on that, on that topic. Uh, and, and we touched on it here today a little bit too, as you've obviously heard.
Yeah, yeah, no, it was good. I think it was a very good question. Um, and there were a lot of really good questions there, um, and I, I, I thought Anne did a good job answering. Uh, there, there were a couple of things where, um, I just didn't want to, you know, I didn't want to step on toes or, you know, jump in where I'm not, where I shouldn't be, so. Uh, but if there are additional questions that you all have after, you know, um, hearing that presentation, I think, you know, we could, I don't know, Chair, if it would be worthwhile for commissioners to send those questions, um, to, uh, to staff. And we'd be happy to, you know, dig up, dig up whatever answers we can for you, uh, and or bring, you know, bring answers back at the next meeting. Um, but, you know, there was, that was a lot of information, uh, that was contained in that presentation. And so if there are questions that come up, we're, we're very happy to get those answers for you or, and or, you know, work with Anne to get, get answers for you as well, so. Uh, just wanted to make sure and put that out there to the group.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I, I would encourage y'all, uh, first though, to use the resources that are available online. You know, the, those videos, those examples, all of those, uh, all of those links that Anne presented. I, I would ask you, Carl, to have Anne, um, shoot that whole set of slides out to us. Um, because all of those links will be contained in there in a nice, you know, concise area that we can reference. Um, so, uh, that
The slide deck is actually in the, uh, agenda and materials folder. So it's, it's already there. So you, in the link that, um, Michelle would have provided you, if you just follow that link where you're getting the agenda, that, that PowerPoint is, is, uh, contained there as well, so.
Right, yeah.
And there again, any, any questions about that, please, you know, feel free to, to send them our way.
Okay, so then next meeting is going to be, uh, March eighteenth, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Uh, any closing thoughts or comments, um, from anyone? Questions, wise or otherwise, as my English teacher used to say.
It was a good meeting. I'm glad you got it set up, Carl and Greg.
Yeah, well, thanks for your thoughtful questions. Okay, well, barring nothing else, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Move by. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks a lot, and I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks.
Good night.